Good evening, everyone. It is 7:04 and I hereby call to order the August 2017 meeting of the Village Activity Board of Trustees. Would you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, folks. Nice to have so many of you here. And if you don't know, this is a lot of people for a board meeting in Tivoli, so we've got six. If you haven't had a chance to sign in, please make sure you do, and we've got agendas.
A big bowl, eh?
Great. Okay, we will begin, please, with a village clerk's report. Clerk Bruno.
Yes. In the clerk's office, there were 398 trash bags that were sold. Two payrolls were processed, and our planning and zoning boards were relatively quiet, so the deputy clerk did not need any planning and zoning workshops or anything. That's about it, but along with our guests, we also have a young guest here, Chapman Ottler, who's here to attend a meeting for his Eagle Scout.
For Eagle Scout, right.
From the House.
Oh, thank you. Well, the planning board is quiet. It's not quiet in this building.
Is that the movie?
Yes.
The Big Lebowski.
We're up against the Big Lebowski upstairs. If you wouldn't mind. Perfect Deputy Mayor assignment. Just see what they can do. This happened once before. I think it was downstairs or something else, though.
It was another movie?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was an Asian.
Let's remember to speak with the library about this. Okay. Thank you for the clerk's report. Schedule of upcoming events. Well, as you can see, Trustee Azaradi is not here with us tonight, but she certainly made sure that I tell you about Street Painting Day. It's going to take place on Saturday, September 23rd, weather providing. If it's inclement weather, we'll try for either the next day, that Sunday, or even the following weekend. But since it's not going to rain, it's going to be the 23rd, okay, September. Applications are available at the village clerk's office. I'm not sure if we have another website yet, but we...
It is.
It is on the website already. And she wants me to tell you all to watch out for a new electronic application, which will soon be on the website, or the Street Painting Facebook page. The Street Painting Facebook page will be launched next week, and there you can just do an electronic application for street painting. And you can contact Trustee Azaradi if you'd like to volunteer, and it always takes a lot of extra hands and extra help, particularly early in the morning, I mean, like 7:00 in the morning, to pull off that great festival. So, Street Painting, September 23rd. Trustees, we have in our books two sets of minutes, July 19th regular board meeting and the August 9th workshop minutes. We've had a chance to review these, and I'll just point out, remind you all that at the August 9th workshop, thank you Deputy Mayor, we took two actions on that. We awarded two contracts for some sidewalk on Broadway and paving on Friendship Street. I'll go into that more later for everyone, but just to make sure that everyone's seen that in the minutes for the August 9th workshop. With that said, is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Murphy, followed by Major. Any discussion? Thank you Clerk Bruno for working on those minutes, as always. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are accepted. Moving on to treasurer's report. Okay, this one's out of the general fund. We spent $37,151.62 out of the water fund, $3,633.92 out of the sewer fund, $4,631.72 for a grand total of $45,417.26. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Schneider, followed by Murphy. Any discussion? I want to thank Treasurer Bonnie Day. All in favor?
Aye.
And the treasurer's report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Major, followed by Schneider. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bills may be paid. Zoning reports. Let's see, we did not talk about this. Anyone want to read the zoning report besides the mayor?
Sure. So, the activities from the building and zoning part before July and August, building permits reviewed and issued, two, building inspection performed, six, complaints submitted and investigated, five, zoning violations issued, eight, appearance tickets issued, one, and municipal surge is requested and completed.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. So another active month from our new COVID enforcement officer and building inspector, John Fenton. And all I can say is he's been working hard and doing a great job, so pleased to have him on board. And let's see. Okay, so now this is the time in our meeting when we open the floor to public comment on agenda items. I usually say quickly what they are, so that your comments might be meaningful or useful for all of us. We're going to set a public hearing on some proposed legislation regarding the keeping of backyard hens. Did we have a copy? It's here? Yeah. It's going to be on the website tomorrow morning. We can talk about that if any of you would like to. We also have a special proclamation I intend to make regarding St. Paul's Day, and when we get to that, we're going to have a few members of the congregation come up here and join us in the conversation and the proclamation. And lastly, there are some budget modifications. Moving, the engineering line was hit for a number of things that actually should get moved over somewhere else. For example, the annual water quality report, it's a couple hundred bucks, and some designs for a handicap rent at the firehouse, which hit the engineering line, but we're going to put it in the fire department line. So, are there any public comments on agenda items only, please? Very good. Let's get going. First item of regular business is to set a public hearing on hens for Wednesday, September 20th, 2017. Trustees, you have draft law in your minders. I'll just share with folks a little bit of it.
Why don't we start with the legislation?
Sure.
Just so we know, just so everybody knows a little why we're doing it.
Give it a read.
Okay. So, the keeping of hens supports a local sustainable food system by providing an affordable, nutritious food source for fresh eggs. The keeping of hens also provides free nitrogen-rich fertilizer, chemical-free pest control, animal companionship, and leave control, among other benefits. Purpose of this law is to enable residents to keep a small number of hens for non-commercial use while creating standards that ensure that such domestic hens do not adversely affect the neighborhood surrounding the property where such hens are kept.
Thank you. You know, Tivoli's code has been quiet on backyard chickens, and we've felt for some time that it should be clear, so that people who have chickens can have them sensibly and quietly, and people who don't want to live next to too many chickens and roosters or whatever else will have protection. So, you know, whenever we do these codes, it's about, you know, letting things happen that are sensible in the village, but making sure they don't have adverse effects on the quality of life for everyone else, because we all have to live together in this little place, right? So, the, this legislation came about through a long, deliberate process. We reconstituted the zoning review committee. What did we do that last fall?
Yeah.
They met several times, and some of you may have attended a sort of information gathering forum that they held, and they spent a number of months on this. And then our process here, that zoning review committee is made up of residents, volunteers. They tackle a topic, say, hens, and, you know, they look at other communities, what they have, you know, try and make it fit sensibly to our village, and make recommendations to the village board. So they did that. We've looked this over. The attorneys drafted this legislation, announced at this step. The next step will be the public hearing on September 20th, and at that point, we either vote and adopt it into law, or go back and tinker with it further based on public comment at that time. So, I know a lot of people in the village care about this, so let's see, on the September 20th. Is there a motion to set the public hearing for Wednesday, September 20th at 7:00 PM? It'll be right here in this room, on hens. I guess we're calling it hens.
Hens.
Is there a motion? All right, that was Trustee Murphy. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Do you need a roll call on this?
I'd like to.
Okay. Roll call vote, please. Trustee Murphy. Aye. Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Major.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And the public hearing is set for Wednesday, September 20th, so you can read the draft legislation on the website tomorrow. Next, St. Paul's Day. I would like to invite our guests up here. I'm not sure who all's going to come up. Jackie's going to come up, right?
Welcome, but they're late.
You're all welcome. You know, if Margaret wants to come up.
The bar is, the bar is church smaller than I have.
So I'm very pleased that these three ladies and this gentleman all came at my invitation, and I'll just say that among them, we have two of our recent Citizen of the Years. The last two years running, are both in the room right now, so this is an august group. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jackie Zachal, please.
Thank you. Out of five churches in Tivoli, St. Paul's is the only one left, and we're up on Woods Road or Episcopal Church, but anyone is welcome to come. This year, we're going to be celebrating our 200th anniversary, and we're going to have a walk through our cemetery, because Father Lindsey is going to do that, and believe me, it's worthwhile going to hear. He has a lot of history that he knows of the cemetery. It's the Livingston's, the Roosevelt's, the Davis's, everything. Believe me, it's a lot of history, and you'll be glad that you came, because you'll learn a lot, you really will. Then you'll have a little tour inside the church, and you'll see all the monuments and the plaques upon the walls of all the people. And then at 4:00, they're going to have a small service in the church, celebrating. And on 6:00, we're going to have a roast beef dinner at the American Legion over here, and we expect a lot of the ministers that used to attend our church, was part of our church, at one time, to come. Some of the members that have moved away are hopefully going to come, so we could just all be together and just discuss things and talk about things, and it'd just be a nice night for everyone to get together and get to know everyone again, and just talk about the old times and stuff. Tivoli is a very historical area, and that church is part of it. It's been there for a long time, and Elmore Roosevelt's family is buried up there in the mausoleum, and they all attended our church one time, so it's kind of nice to know what's going on around the town. When new people come in, they don't realize what we have here. We have a lot of places that was really, well, at one time, especially when the mayor was here. So that's the day, that's October the 21st, and it should be from, I think it's 2:00 is the cemetery is the tour, then 4:00 is the little service that they're going to have, and then we'll have our dinner, and then Sunday, we have the bishop, one of the bishops coming up for our Sunday service at the church. It should be a very, very nice time, and it will be nice to see a lot of the people. And you don't have to be a Presbyterian to come, you're all welcome to come, just to see and meet people, which would be very nice. We have a nice new minister. He's really, really very nice and friendly, and he wants to be included in the community. He's very, very, and, you know, it's not all church. He wants to help people, and that's what we really need here. He's really very, very nice. So that's about it, really, for right now. If you come at night, I have tickets on me. The tickets are $15 for adults and for children under 12, 10. And we're going to have other things there, little prizes and stuff like that, and there won't be any drinking, no drink, because we're just going to have, you know, tea, soda, and stuff like that, and co-ati. It should be a nice night, so I'd like to see some of yous come.
Well, thank you very much, Jackie.
You're welcome.
And with that background, it's a great pleasure for me to offer this proclamation, which I will now read, and I don't, it's kind of hard to proclaim sitting down, so I'm going to stand. I think this should be done from standing. Whereas on September 2nd, this is long, folks, get comfortable. Whereas on September 2nd, 1817, Robert L. Livingston and others did need to establish the Protestant Episcopal Church of St. Paul of Red Hook, and on October 21st, 1817, said congregation was admitted as a parish church in the diocese in New York, and whereas the congregation did establish the Trinity School and Chapel, which subsequently became an independent parish church known as Trinity Church, and whereas on December 11th, 1940, said two congregations did merge to form St. Paul's and Trinity Parish of Tivoli, New York, and whereas during the last 200 years, this congregation has been faithful to its mission of praising God and proclaiming His word as found in the Old and New Testaments by serving His people, both rich and poor, young and old, powerful and weak, believer and unbeliever, by feeding the hungry, clothing the naked, educating the masses, sheltering the homeless, comforting the bereaved, forgiving and restoring the penitent, healing the sick, burying the dead, giving hope to the downtrodden, inspiring minds and spirits, welcoming friends and strangers, and whereas did establish Trinity House and Provost Park to provide housing for senior citizens, and continues to support food pantries in the area, provide clothing to the needy, and whereas in all of its activities has made significant contributions to improving the lives of the citizens and residents of the village of Tivoli, now therefore I, Joel R. Griffith, Mayor of the village of Tivoli, New York, do hereby proclaim October 21st, 2017, as St. Paul's and Trinity Parish Day, and do issue this certificate of recognition to St. Paul's and Trinity Parish on the occasion of its 200th anniversary, and along with the village board of trustees, to extend our sincere congratulations and best wishes for many, many more happy and productive years. And I urge my fellow citizens to recognize with gratitude the crucial role played by St. Paul's and Trinity Parish in developing the village of Tivoli. You can pick this up on the way out. Anyone else like to say anything on that? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming, and we're all excited to celebrate Tivoli history with you, and we'll see you in October.
But truly, go for the tour. It'll be amazing. They're really, it's an excellent storyteller.
Why don't I? Thank you, folks. We appreciate this.
You see us?
Share that with them. And now for something completely different, budget mods. We went over these briefly in the workshop, and I mentioned them, so it's, you know, we just got a lot of bills from our engineer. Some of them actually should go to other lines than the engineering and the general funds. So, trustees, you've had a chance to look these over. Is there a motion to adopt the budget modifications?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Schneider, followed by Murphy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That concludes our regular business. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, September 20th, 2017, at 7:00 PM, preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM here at the Historic Lots of Paister Hall. There will be a regular workshop September 13th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Moving on to committee reports. Trustee Azaradi is not here. Anyone want to go after the water sewer report? Or it's probably in my binder, so I'm going to do it. That's me. It's a bit nostalgic, this was one of my trustee duties. So, don't peek, get the rainfall. Okay. Rainfall for the last month?
Uh, 3.93.
All right, everyone hold that number, because I got to see where it is in the report.
Does anybody else want to get a bonus?
4.1.
I know, you're kind of dominating the...
I've never hit it.
I got 3.4.
93.
Football.
Closest without going over. Just spin a number out.
Oh, okay, so 2.7.
Very good. Now we got a contest. All right, this month, the ballot was off. The McKnight was on every day, running approximately 11,000 or 12,000 gallons a day. 2PW was on, running 11,000, 12,000 gallons a day, and 5PW was on about three weeks out of the month, running 90, 100 gallons a day. 4PE and 10PE ran all month, anywhere from 16,000 to 18,000 gallons a day. Woodmark Wells, our most robust wells, were on throughout the month, doing 24,000 to 26,000 gallons a day, and this must be the total rainfall. Does that mean the total?
Ooh, look at that.
6.6.
Oh, Murphy.
Oh, that's a dollar for you.
All right, another wet, another wet month in Tivoli. And the Water Systems Operational Report, our water quality is tested every month, two random samples throughout the village, and came back with no violations, nothing to be concerned about. And comments from last month, they flushed a Montgomery Street water main on July 18th. And I can tell you, for folks east of the bridge on Broadway and Clay Hill Road, they know about this already, but we had a pretty major water main break the last couple days up on Monument Hill. So it starts as a little leak, they went in to start working on it, you remove all the clay that's holding that pipe together, boom, and they had to put on a 30-inch clamp, 500 bucks. But as always, DPW does a great job. Again, it reiterates the age and fragility of our water system, so we're sorry for the inconvenience for people who were out of service today for about an hour or so. That's the water report. Trustee Schneider, Justice Court report.
Absolutely. So for the month of July, sorry, the pages here. We had a total of 17 charges received, 12 charges disposed, $516 was collected and remitted to the state comptroller.
Thank you, Trustee Schneider. Trustee Murphy, tell us about it.
As many of you know, the summer recreation program came back this year after being absent last year. It's been very successful beyond what I expected. On the first week, we had 16 children signed up for it. By the end of the first week, we were up to about 20. We ended up with a total of 27 children in attendance, on and off, take a day off or not. So actually, we had, I had hired two counselors to keep it under 24, because we went over the ratio of 1 to 12. I've been at the camp every day, assisting, giving a hand, getting to know the kids, and they're having a blast. It's great. Last week, we went on one of our trips to Cat's Band. Thank you very much to Cat's Band for having us. I think it was wonderful to have the children see what's in our village. Yesterday, we went to visit Saskia at Tivoli Portraits. She was wonderful, fantastic, and on Friday, we'll be going to Tangent Theatre. I'd like to thank all the people involved in letting the children come and see what's in their village. Also, I'd like to thank our counselors, Ari and Abe, for their hard work, and the parents group to making it happen as well, and the support from the board as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, Trustee Murphy's been the heavy lifter on this month, so we really give it up to you. Those kids probably, I know they're having a blast right now, but they're going to look back at this and realize how lucky they were to have this kind of a camp here with their friends in town. Couple of us crashed that trip to Cosbon. That was really something, because we got to watch an entire rehearsal with the dance instructor, and the kids were pretty into it. It was very cool.
And we got to have snacks with the antique fire truck.
Right, of course, you know, Cosbon stores our 57 Maximo fire truck, the one that Santa rides around on. They're nice enough to keep it in one of their barns, so it was fun for the kids to crack out the snacks and see the truck that they're going to have to wait until Winterfest to see, to see again. But yeah, so we got a couple days left. Those two counselors have been great, and incidentally, one's a current Bard student, is that right?
They're both Bard students.
They're both current students.
Yeah, both seniors.
A wonderful example of the good things about being next to the college. These guys have just been amazing with the children, just great. And I hope that coming off the success of this, we can grow and expand the program in future summers and really build it back up, so.
Yeah, I believe we can.
Excellent. Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Deputy Mayor Major.
Well, as usual, great things going on at the library. In fact, if you listen, they're showing the Big Lebowski right now. On Friday afternoon, 6:00, between 6:00 and 7:00, singer-songwriter Maggie Rothwell is going to be performing out in the Gisibow. That'll be a nice event. And on Monday, come to the park between 12:30 and 3:00, bring an empty cereal box, not a giant one, not a mini one, and make an eclipse viewer and check it out. The library's going to have, you know, they'll be doing some crafts, and also there will be snacks, so bring a chair and get ready. Passes for Alana are still available at the circulation desk, and if you have not been to the Home of Frederick Church, Patrick Sweeney, or School Painter, you should add that to the list. It's amazing. The house is incredible, the view is incredible. Just do it. Also, I mean, there's tons of stuff going on at the library, so go to tivolilibrary.org, and you can check it all out. You can sign up to be on their mailing list. The library is partnering with Claremont State Historic Site for a Go Back in Time Story Hour, and that's next Tuesday at 11:00. And there's a lot going on at Claremont. There's an interesting exhibit in the visitor's center called Catherine Livingston Timson, The Woman Who Gave Up Claremont. She was this Gilded Age woman who was there and then just chucked in. So, go, it's really cool. And so that started on August 1st, and it's up for a couple of months. There's going to be a free concert tomorrow there at 6:00. They're doing a series called Harmonies on the Hudson, and 6:00, it's a band called Sin City Woodstock, and you can bring a picnic, but no booze. And then on September 10th, there's a geological history of Claremont, so you walk around with Doctors Robert and Joe Hamantitis, and there's all sorts of, if you've ever walked around, there's all sorts of geological formations there. They're pretty cool. So, there's that. The Montgomery Place campus grounds of Bard College, including the gardens near Buridum and the trails, are open every day, dawn of dusk, and there are mansion tours on Saturdays at 10:30, 11:30, 1:30, and 2:30. And so, admission to you, the site is free, tours of the mansion are $10, no reservations, no pets. And there's an event coming up at the Elmendorf for historic reading. It's called Historic Tavern Trail Evening, and this is September 8th from 6:30 to 8:30. And there's going to be a presentation on the hidden history of prohibition in our area, and then local distilleries are going to be offering samples, breweries and distilleries. See you there, Janette. Tickets are $5, and because the space is limited, recommendations, or reservations are recommended. And finally, the canoe launch is still not quite done.
That was just about to ask.
Yeah.
Well, it's not quite done.
The canoe launch in Tivoli Bay's.
That's the DEC rebuilding there?
It's looking good. It's just not...
Sounds like another project I can think of down that way on Broadway.
Hmm, are we done talking about that?
Well, just that it's looking good, but it's not done yet. I think we'll leave it there. Thank you Deputy Mayor Major. Folks, I want to just talk a little bit about some upcoming construction projects, and to get there, I'll talk about Pine Street. So our Pine Street bus stop project is nearing completion. I think the shelter arrives today, and it will be installed imminently. The new bus shelter, a garbage recycling can, two benches, and then the last thing they will do is come in and strike. That will probably be another week or so, but the contractor that handled that, Black Dot Maintenance, has just been great to work with. I keep hearing from residents that, you know, how good it's looking, and I've been very pleased with that whole project. Again, you know, this, this goes back five years to when we had the bus stop in front of the post office, our tight, double parked street there, and the big buses picking and dropping off and choking the roadway, worrying about fire trucks coming through, and, you know, so we moved it over to Pine Street, and that solved some of those problems. We got the big buses and unloading, unloading off, but of course, the buses were still sort of in the lane, it's access to the park, so now with these, with this new bus lane, those buses are out of the road, off to the side. You can have safe two-way traffic, good visibility for pedestrians going in there. And again, this was a community development block grant that the village won a couple of years ago, so that's federal money distributed to counties who give it out to municipalities. And so that entire project was about $120,000, and I think it looks like we are getting our money's worth over there. It's almost done. Apologies to the residents of Pine Street for bearing with the construction, and we'll have a nice, nice bus stop. And we'll have a nice, nice bus stop ever afternoon. So the next two things, I mentioned it quickly. At our August 9th workshop, we awarded two contracts. We did it at the workshop instead of this regular meeting, which these tend to be a little more followed and watched. But with construction season, we didn't even want to lose a week. So we made sure we got that, those contracts awarded last week. First one is to do 200 feet of sidewalk on Broadway. That's approximately between the bridge and the pizzeria on that side. 2011, we did a number of feet, 100 feet of sidewalk west of the bridge. And there was a long 200-foot stretch that gets you all the way up to the pizzeria that we did not, we were not able to do at that time, due to budget constrictions. So we're going to get that done. And we're going to have, and then when the county finishes the bridge and they do that last little piece, we're going to have a nice five-foot sidewalk from the bridge up to the intersection. You know, we're walking village, safety, and it's just nice to walk around here. So that sidewalk has needed that for some time. That work's supposed to start at the end of September. So we'll have one board meeting before then to talk about it. Again, the other project is paving the north end of Friendship Street. When our roads were reviewed by the state some time ago, the forest grade was received by Friendship Street. And if you go down there, you'll see particularly the north end, it's all washed out. It's potholes, gravel, floods. And, you know, again, we're always thinking about emergency access, getting the ambulance up there, God forbid you had to. So we're going to get that street redone. I don't have a construction date for that yet. There should be a pre-construction site visit next week. I'll have a better idea of when that work's going to happen. Obviously, for residents of that stretch of Broadway and for that end of Friendship Street, you know, we'll be coming to talk to you to make this as least, as unintrusive as possible for you. But can't fix these things up without a little period of inconvenience. And the last thing, and if any trustees want to jump in on this, please do. We are seriously considering purchasing our streetlights from Central Hudson. Many communities are doing this. At our workshop, we were joined by Supervisor McKeon from the town of Red Hook. And there's a possibility of going in with a number of other towns to do bulk purchasing. So the way this works is our municipality buys these streetlights from Central Hudson. Then we own them, and then we can replace them with whatever we like. But then we have to take care of them as well. So say you get six municipalities, they all go out with an RFP, request for proposals, to get a vendor who's going to come in and maintain your lights for you. And then the idea is that, you know, it's expensive to rent these fixtures from Central Hudson. So it's going to be a tremendous cost savings. It also gives us the opportunity to have a better carbon footprint, switch to LEDs, et cetera. Anyone else want to add to this?
Well, I think the idea is to work on the lighting plan and to take advantage of new technologies, right? Not only in efficiency, but also in dimmability or motion sensors or whatever. Right. Just because we have such a mishmash of technologies now that are all pretty...
Right.
Updated.
So there are a lot of reasons to do this. Money, you know, and saving the planet, and some aesthetic control as well, which we care about in our historic and tractable village. So more on that to come. And last thing I'll say is don't forget, street paintings is the 23rd of September. With that, we'd like to open the floor to public comment, please. You've sat through this. Any questions, any comments? Is this boring? That's what I like to do.
None at all. The debate over the rainfall was riveting. Thank you. Yeah.
Have you thought of what your project might be?
Well, actually, I've already completed my project. I built rehearsal cubes, which is a, it's a foot and a half, foot and a half cube that can be used in place of props for theater. So I built eight of these for the Red Hook Drama Club. Because they had eight already and it wasn't enough. They were incredibly useful, so they requested that, you know, I build more. But yeah, it went very well.
Excellent. And Chapman will be a senior.
Great.
Very excited.
Well, enjoy your last few weeks of summer here.
Oh, I'm trying.
Any other comments from the floor? From the board? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 7:39, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, folks.